Hi guys! Welcome to my final uni series! Hi guys, welcome back to my channel! Welcome to my final college series! Welcome to my final uni series! Welcome to my final days as a uni student! Welcome to my final semester! Let me make my bed, let me clean my room, and we'll have a proper chat session, okay? Please tell me why I'm searching up cameras? I don't need one, I don't have the money! Yimurai, you don't have the money! Yimurai, you don't have the money! Yimurai, you don't have the money! I really, really want the Osmo Pocket 3, but I'm like, do I need one right now? I already have a camera, but it's so convenient! It's tiny, it's portable, it's just... I feel like it's just nicer to move around with 1.1, $1,000. Yimurai, you don't have the money! I really want one though! But I don't need one right now! That's my chat! My chat is: "I really don't need one right now, maybe next year I can get it." But then again, what if they come up with a new, with a nicer one? Like a nicer version, like a more upgraded version, I guess? Hi guys, welcome back to my YouTube channel! If you're new here, my name is Yimurai Chotto. If you're returning, thank you so much for joining us today! I hope that you enjoyed today's video! If you're a returning subscriber, wanna watch my videos on irregular, thank you so much for coming back today! I hope that you enjoyed today's video, and of course, say to me guys: "I hope that you brought a friend!" Hi guys, excited about this vlog because I know I am... No, that's not what I said the last time. We'll figure that out later. Yeah, thank you guys so much for joining me as I create a digital diary of my life. This is my final study vlog, uni, college, you name it, series, event in my life. After this, I'm gonna say this right now: I don't think I'm going to study uni further. I don't think I'm gonna do my masters, I don't think I'm gonna do my PhD. The reason why I'm saying "I don't think" is because I know that things will change. So, I'm not... Never say never, but I don't have any plans to further my studies after this. So this is technically for now, my last college vlog series. And I'm very excited! I don't know, like I don't know how to feel about it. I'm very excited, but then also at the same time, it's a bit... Like it's bittersweet, because I'm like, "Okay, I'm really glad that I've come to the end of my studies", but then also at the same time, I'm really sad, because I feel like my subbies, either they're still in school, or they're going to go to uni, or you know, like they're hoping to study and stuff like that. So it's really nice knowing that I have that community, but then at the same time, now I'm like, "Okay, what now? Like what am I gonna be filming now?" You get what I mean? But anyways, that's the chat for another day. This vlog guys is gonna be a bunch of days. I don't really know how it's gonna work, but we're gonna figure it out. I started school on Monday, that was the first day of the semester. Deacon starts the second semester a little bit earlier than other unis, I don't know why. Yeah, that's... That's... I'm used to it now. That always happens. And then we finish early as well, so we finish in October. I'm only taking two classes technically. So I still have my placement, which I'm gonna talk about in the sit-down video, "Life Update", but yeah, I still have my placement, and then I have an elective. Elective is a class that you get to pick, that is outside your course. So something, it doesn't even have to be engineering, basically. And obviously, I had to pick something to do with what I love doing the most. Something to do with media, something to do with creating content, with being a digital creator. So I chose a class that is called "Making Video", it's a media class, and they basically focus on the theory behind making engaging videos. I'm kinda good with the practical part when it comes to making videos, but then I really wanna learn the background and like the theory bit. So that's why I picked that class. The first class is actually tomorrow at 11, so I'm gonna be going for that seminar. So, I have that class, and then I have my engineering project still. I explained a lot about that in the previous semester. So that is basically a student-driven, student-led project that you do by yourself. I'm submitting my thesis at the end of the semester, and then that'll be done. I don't have classes for that project. I only have check-in sessions every two weeks, and it's online, so like at 7:30pm, I think, on a Tuesday. It was actually yesterday, yeah. I don't have to attend any classes or anything like that. The semester should be... Yep, I'm being very careful with my words. It should be better, it should be less stressful and a bit easier, I guess, compared to last semester or the other semesters that I've had in the past. And the only thing that's gonna be hard about it is the fact that this is my final semester. So now I really have to push towards the end. I'm just like, "Just keep going, okay? Just keep going." Those are the classes that I'm taking. So it's the elective, the making video one, and then my project. So, per week, I only have one class, which is amazing! Guys, do you know in first year, I'd have class like every single day, Monday through Friday? And then now I only have one class per week? Like life is so good, guys! I can't even lie to you! The current arrangement that I have is that I do my placement two days of the week, and then I have three days and the weekend for me to focus on my studies and on my classes and stuff. Because the truth is, I still need to pass. It's not like now it's just automatic, that I'm already, you know, an engineer? No, not yet, I still need to pass. So yeah, that's the current arrangement. Came back to Jilong on Sunday, on Saturday. Sunday I did a bit of shopping, just to, you know, restock my groceries and stuff, because I hadn't been here for like a month. And today, I really did like clean my room, my bathroom, my kitchen. I did my laundry at my sister's place, so at least I didn't have any laundry to do here. And yeah, so today, at the end of the day, what I need to do is, I have two voice-overs that I need to record for two brands, no, for one brand. And then, I need to take a look at my project, because, to be honest, I haven't really touched it. Yeah, because I would meet with my supervisor tomorrow, so I just, I need to... I'm assuming the two voice-overs are gonna take me maybe like 40 minutes, 20 minutes each, hopefully. I'm gonna do my project work, and I'm gonna go through what we're gonna be going through in class tomorrow for the making video class. Guys, for the first time in my life, I'm gonna be in a class full of girls, and I'm so excited! That sounds very like... What's so special about that? But for the past three and a half years, I've been learning with boys and boys only, okay? I'm very excited! I'm praying for a very productive, very fruitful, very successful semester, final semester. I'm praying that I stay on track. I've managed to stay on track for the past three and a half years, guys. God's grace, I've not failed any class, I've been working very hard, and this is all coming to an end. So I'm really excited to see how it goes and where it goes, but... In the next 12 weeks, we're gonna be going through this together. Hopefully, I'm gonna be vlogging consistently. I'm gonna try and keep the vlogs a bit short, I guess. Just that at least I have enough time for me to edit and put them out for you guys, but I'm really excited. Also, I've already showered. Today is just the PJ day, okay? Hands, hands, hands! Yimurai Chotto, you have six minutes to leave this room! As you guys can tell, I'm in a very, very good mood. I woke up today, and I was like, "Lord, here we go again!" The idea of going to class is always exciting, until you actually have to go. And then I was like, "You know what? No! I am blessed to be here!" I cannot tell my shoelaces! You're blessed to be in your final year, you're blessed to be, you know, going to school! You know what I mean? Like, this is a blessing! So, go for it, and go at it hard! Okay, so I just had to like, give myself a little pep talk and just be like, "Come on, sweetie!" Because I was showering, I was in my little praise and worship session. I feel like shana songs, when it comes to praise and worship, they hit home, okay? I'm so excited! I have my first class, my only class rather. Today's a full day. I have my class from 11 until 1, and then I have a meeting with my supervisor from 2:30 until 3:15, usually for like 45 minutes. And then after that, I want to film the last office works video. So it's school, and then content, okay? Priorities! We are going to pack my bag together. First thing, iPad. Cable, my phone charger, and my headphones, I'm gonna be wearing those. Also going to bring my iPad charger, because the class is for two hours, and I didn't charge my iPad last night. Because I'm a smart girl, clearly I'm a genius. My digital plan... Digital is crazy. My daily planner, the same one from last semester, I don't need to get a new one, it's not full yet, so... Yeah. Wallet, as usual. I'm so used to taking my car keys everywhere, so I'm still gonna take it, even though like, I highly doubt that there's any meth involved in this class. Perfume, because I like to move around with perfume. Roll-on, just some deodorant. Because we hate smelly armpits. Body spray here, which I'm actually gonna spray right now. Vaseline, guys! So I was using the... What's that brand called? There's this lip balm thing, it's called... I forgot the name. Tell me why Milan ate the whole thing out, guys? Like, I can't eat it! I wish I was joking! Here's my bag! This is my first-of-class outfit, just my white tracksuit from White Fox. Oh, they're so cute! I wish you guys could see the full outfit. Highly doubt that I'll need this, but I'm gonna bring it still. And my water bottle. I'm done. We've just started the class. Our first little task, I guess, is to create an intro video about ourselves, and then submit that. I'm vlogging on my iPad, because I didn't bring my camera, so we're gonna do that together. It should be pretty easy, I just have to answer like a few questions, so... Let's do that. Sorry. It's all good. I'm using this as my trap with stand-up. And then I'm just gonna start yapping. So let's see how this looks. Hi guys! Does that look good? Oh, that looks nice, okay. Yep. So it's my name, what I'm studying, my year, what brings me to this class, and what I'm hoping to get out of it. Hi everyone, my name is Yimurai Chotto, and I'm a final-year mechanical engineering student. And you must be wondering why I'm actually taking this class. It has nothing to do with engineering, but in our final year, actually not that, our final year, you get the opportunity to do two electives. So, one of them has to be an engineering one, and then the other one has to be a non... Or it can be a non-engineering one. So I decided to take this class. And the reason why I'm taking it is because I actually am very passionate about concentration. I am a content creator myself. I started in 2021. Started off on Instagram, and then went onto YouTube, and then TikTok. And I love it. Basically, film my student life as an international student who's studying abroad, and I've loved it since I started it. And what I'm hoping to get out of this is, I guess, the theory behind all. I think I'm in a pretty good spot, or rather, I think I've done pretty well in terms of teaching myself how to edit videos just through like tutorials on YouTube and so forth. And now, I'd love to learn more about the theory, or like how best to optimize my videos. So I'm really looking forward to it, and I feel like I'm going to learn a lot, which I haven't been able to learn in the past three, four years, ever since I started, but I'm really, really excited, and I can't wait to see what this class brings. I'm gonna cut it up a little bit, that was very quick though. A lot later, it is currently 3:26. Can you guys see the time? I don't know, okay. But yes, 3:26, my class finished at 1pm. My class was absolutely amazing! Guys, do you know what it is? I was watching Diana's vlog the other day, and then she did this thing, where like she was talking about something, and then she slowly started to divert. She was talking about a lot of different things at once, and then she was like... I think she said something along the lines of, "Okay, Layela, one idea at a time." What did she say? If I find the clip, I don't know. I think she said, yeah, she said like, "Finish talking about one thing and then go to the next", and I'm trying to do that, because I think it's so easy for me to want to talk about everything, for some reason, because like, I don't know, I think when you're filming, it kind of feels as if you have to say everything at once. Which is weird, because no one is rushing you. You can take your time. Anyways, yes, let's start off with class. Class was amazing, guys! I loved it! It had me rethinking my career choices. And I've never done that, guys, not once in my engineering classes, if I sat there and said, "Am I really doing the right thing?" And considering how hard engineering is, that thought should have crossed my mind at least once. Never. But today, in my final year, in my final semester, I was like... "So you're telling me that people have been enjoying uni like this, and I have been suffering?" Because guys, even just the atmosphere, even just the environment that I was in, I actually felt like, "Damn, I enjoyed this, I like this, and I love it so much." "God, please, thank you so much for giving me the courage to pick this class." Thank you so much for putting, for planting the idea in my head to take this class, because I know I'm about to have a time. Again, really, really enjoyed it, I liked it so much. I genuinely felt like this is in my area of expertise, or like this is in my line of... What, what do they say? I actually enjoy this, I actually know what I'm doing, I actually know what I'm talking about. So it was just really, really interesting. And just from the first jump, like I could, I can tell that I'm going to be learning a lot. Not even just about like making videos, but a lot about social media, because like we started going through some of the things that people say about social media, whether it's true or not true, your opinions, and like what you basically think about it all. And it was so, so super interesting, and I can't wait to share more with you guys about that. It's just that this was the first class, and it was just more of the introduction. But yeah, I loved it, damn! Okay? So that finished at 1pm. And then, I had a meeting with my supervisor, which finished like about 20 minutes, 10 minutes ago, I think. Started at 2:30. And if I'm gonna be very honest with you guys, I was feeling a bit nervous going into this, just because obviously we just came from the break, and... I don't know, I just don't know really like how to feel about my project anymore. Not that I don't wanna do it anymore, because for sure, like, I love my project and I love the topic that I picked. It's just that, I think last semester I didn't do as much work as I should have done, simply because I had a lot going on in terms of the classes. So I don't know if I mentioned this in the last vlog, but then last semester, I basically played around with my course map a little bit. Your course map is basically the classes that you're going to be taking. Okay, so you're given your course map at the beginning of your first year, and then it's basically like an organized document in terms of which classes you're gonna be doing, when, which semester, which year, till the very end of your degree, right? So, at the end of my third year, or like just before I started my final year, I started to play around with my course map a little bit, and I told the... I asked my student advisor if I could basically finish all my engineering classes in the first semester, and they were like, "Yeah, sure, like, why not?" So then they swapped them around for me, right? So that I could finish all my engineering classes then. And in my head, thinking about the future, I was like, "This is actually probably the best thing ever", because then at least if I finish all my engineering classes in the first semester, then the second semester, I don't have to be stressed. I know that I'm done, I can just have my elective and my project, right? Which makes a lot of sense. It's just that it wasn't the most practical, it wasn't the most, it wasn't the best decision, simply because that meant that I was stressed a lot of the time, first of all. Secondly, I didn't really have enough time to put into my project. So this project, you expected to put in 20 hours a week? That's about four hours every single day, if you're studying Monday through Friday. And I simply couldn't do that, because with my other engineering classes, it, it just wasn't doable, quite frankly speaking. I didn't really get enough time to actually put in my all into this project in the first semester, and that's the conversation that I was having with my, with my supervisor just now. Because then she could even tell that, you know, like in my reports, I knew what I was talking about, but then I didn't really go into detail simply because of that whole time thing, right? And then she was explaining that like I've taught you before, because she's taught me first year, second year, third year, and she was like, "You even did a similar class last year, which was called product development", where we had to like do research and stuff like that. And then she was like, "And I know that it's not that you're incapable of doing this, I know that you're very good at this, it's just that you actually need to give yourself time to do it." So then, I think that's why I was feeling nervous about it, because I knew that like last semester I didn't really put as much effort and energy into it as I should have. And me being the perfectionist that I am, me being the... What's that word? Academic person, like I'm an academic validation type of person, just kind of bad, but whatever. Um, that was kind of like... Yeah, I just didn't feel very comfortable, but I still passed the class and everything, so it's not like I failed. It's just that I just wanted more time into it. So anyways, she really reassured me, and she really told me that, "You know what? You can do this, you just need to give yourself time, and even what you did last semester, yes, you swapped around your classes and whatever, but then sometimes in life you have to make those compromises, as long as you make sure that you come out of it at the other end." And she made some good points, because the truth is, at least now I know that I'm done with my engineering classes, I don't have to stress about them anymore. I know that I've passed all of them, now I can focus on my elective, and I can actually enjoy my final semester, I guess, and still put in a lot of effort into my project. You guys are working with me, you guys understand what I'm saying, right? I hope so. Now, I want to go and film my office works video. So, for office works, I had three videos that I was contracted them, that I was contracted to. So like, basically, they needed me to make three videos for them. I've made two, I've edited them, voice-overs, everything done. The last one, though, I need to print stuff using office works. So there is an office works that is like 700 meters away from me, so I'm just gonna take a little walk. Okay, we're gonna go together, and we're gonna go print some stuff, and then I'm gonna come back and finish, and basically film the video, because I actually haven't filmed it at all, because I need the filmed things for me to film the video. So I'm basically making a vision board. The whole idea behind this video is a media vision board tracker type of thing, where I basically say, "Okay, so now the first half of the year is done, this is the second half, am I resetting my goals? What have I done? What do I still need to do?" Usually, I do not really share my goals on social media like that, simply because, I don't know, to me, I just find it kind of weird. I'm just gonna print out like some grad stuff, some content creation things, things that already align with what I do. So like school stuff, I just ask ChatGPT for a bunch of things. Guys, please use AI! If you're sitting at home right now thinking, "I don't use AI, I'm better than that", good for you! For the rest of us, let's use AI, guys! It's literally there for us to use. This is what I do. ChatGPT, I swear, like it literally does a lot of the work. So, let's say, I will be scrolling on TikTok, right? And then I see a video, then I'm like, "Oh, okay, I like that." And then I think, "Okay, how am I going to make this different? How am I going to make this Yimurai Chotto branded, right?" And then I'm like, "Okay, so maybe let me do it like this." And then what I do is I go into ChatGPT, and then I say, "Okay, I have this video idea, and this is what I wanna do, blah, blah, blah. Please, can you come up with some sort of like content structure, or like a short brief on like how I can actually film the video?" So what ChatGPT does is that it gives you the steps, it gives you a structure, it gives you a story, it helps you with storyboarding, and actually coming up with an actual video idea. So I'll say this again. Please use AI, guys! I know some people even use it with their voice-overs, which is also very, very good. Only reason why I don't do that Only reason why I don't do that is because with my voiceovers I don't like reading office script Simply because I I start to sound very Robotish is that a word I just made that up But yeah I start to sound very like da 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 So I just try to have points in my head and then I'll just speak that's how I do my voiceovers But I know some people that use it and it's very good because it actually gives you First of all it gives you talking points it gives you what to actually say it's so good Using this for my video so I'll say this again Please make use of AI guys it's there for us to use let us use it okay So right now I just have my Canva open on my iPad And I'm just gonna be looking for images let me actually pull up Pinterest here I'm just going to be looking for images that I can use Out and then I'll go print them out and then come back and film the video As I said today was a very packed up day I'm not like guys I love it when I find a balance between everything that I'm doing and I think This is something that I kinda struggled with last semester Um in terms of finding a balance because I don't really know if it came out in my videos that I was struggling I don't know I feel like sometimes I'm kinda good at masking things But yeah nah I I did struggle with Balancing my things don't tell me it's raining Guys I'm supposed to take my walk But yeah I did struggle with balancing everything and I think that's why even like my consistency on YouTube was struggling a little bit was lacking a little bit just because like Yeah I I long story short guys I was struggling but then at the end of the day I think it was all worth it Because I passed all my classes did I tell you guys that I passed? I don't even think I did but yeah I passed all my classes Now I'm just left with four credit points to go tall and Okay typically have ten pages if I'm not mistaken printing at office works should be like ten cents per page I hope it is Um I have a graduation hat I have some pink flowers I have a Bible I have like a black woman doing like business things you know like bossy type of stuff And then I have some running gear just like a marathon type of vibe Um hottest do I have I have drinks like going out for dinners which I love As I said these are things that I already do not necessarily things that I want to achieve Just because I I don't know like I just wanna put my goals out there This is just the type of person that I am I don't really like talking about things before they happen I'm just putting things that I already I guess kinda do I have some fitness things do I do fitness things? I do go for runs though recently I haven't been running because it's so cold I'm sorry I can't no absolutely not I have some travel stuff um more like drinks dinner vibe And yes I have ten pages and I'm just gonna save this and then Send it to my phone Because I'm pretty sure I can print from my phone I hope I can It's so pretty I love it And the fact that I don't even put a lot of effort into it is insane Because how did it turn out like this? I love it so much Now I'm gonna edit the video and then I'm gonna submit it And I'm done with my office works collab